I hereby call the Des Moines City Council regular meeting for Thursday, July 14th to order. And with that, I'll have Deputy Mayor Buxton start us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you Deputy Mayor Buxton. Let the record reflect that six of the council members are present. Councilmember Pennington notified me a few weeks ago that he would not be present this meet, in this, at this meeting. Do I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Pennington?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Seeing second from council, seeing, seeing the move, motion from Councilmember Nutting and the second from Councilmember Steinmetz. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes six zero. Councilmember, Councilmember Pennington is excused. All right, are there any correspondents?
No mayor.
Okay.
We do have some written public comments. Jana Wattenberg, land use sign Masonic Home, and Anna Warrior, Racing and Noise Ordinance. And that concludes it, oh, just kidding, and that's all written public comment.
All right, and do we have somebody signed up for written comment? It looks like we're getting the last one in here. While, while I'm waiting for that. It is now time for the comments for the public. I would like to just remind those participants that any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, or who become boisterous threatening or personally abusive while addressing the council will be removed from the meeting. They will have three minutes to speak. With that, I call Ms. Barbara McMichael to this, to the podium, and you will have three minutes. Is, is her mic on? Just, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Barbara McMichael, 22810 Thunderbird Drive. I am here to repeat my deep concern about the proposal to demolish Des Moines Masonic Home. I'm not naive about this. I've mentioned to you before that I, I work in the cultural sector, and I've witnessed many examples of successful historic preservation projects around King County. Historic preservation is about bringing old buildings back to life, bringing new revenue streams into the local economy, and injecting new vibrancy into the community. The Cortona Building in Renton, Washington Hall on Seattle's First Hill, Anderson School Project in Bothell, and the Lodge at St. Edward Park. I toured the old St. Edward Seminary back when it was a wreck, and in a public-private partnership, the owner was able to preserve and transform that building into the destination asset that it is for Kenmore today. So with political vision and partnerships, that sort of project ought to be happening in Des Moines. We know that there's been, that there have been some proposals that have failed, so let's try harder. You have so many potential allies. The Washington Trust for Historic Preservation, Historic Seattle, your 33rd District legislators, and your constituents. I know this council has been instructed by the city attorney, I believe, not to speak publicly on this topic, but that means that you have been unable to represent probably the overwhelming desire of your community to preserve and reinvigorate that property. So, we citizens are engaged in a grassroots effort. We've started a petition to gather the signatures of Des Moines residents who oppose the Masonic Homes demolition, and we want, and want to see it preserved and repurposed. We have the petition up online at tinyurl.com/preservelandmarkonthesound. I invite fellow residents who don't want to see this unique landmark demolished to go online and sign that petition. I've doorbailed over a hundred homes in my own neighborhood, and everybody who's opened their door to me has been pro-preservation. I've sat with my petition outside the Des Moines Library for a couple of hours and gathered dozens of names. This Saturday, artist Dan Wind will be out in front of the Masonic Home from 10:00 a.m. to noon to sketch the building. Anybody can stop by, say hi, watch him at work, and sign the petition. Also this Saturday, I'll be at the Woodmont Library from 1:30 to 3:30 with a petition. I invite folks to come by and sign there. We residents are coming together to affirm our intent and your role in protecting this unique landmark and assuring its use and relevance for the next 95 years. So again, to my fellow Des Moines residents, you can find our petition online at tinyurl.com/preservelandmarkonthesound. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McMichael. Next, next up is Mr. Pettingbone.
Hello, my name is George Pettingbone. I live in Zenith, Washington, and I wanted to thank you all for your attention last week and the week before. And looking forward to progress here. We're, we're slowly working in the right direction. The signs moved forward 15 feet, and there's two of them instead of 13, or 12, or 11. The four-by-eight plywood signs are an inadequate number according to the state CIPA rules. So we need to get more signs up so that people can figure it out. I looked at the four-by-eight sign a couple of days ago, and it had a white 11-by-17 page on it that was unreadable because it was 15 feet away. Now that it's moved closer, and all of a sudden, a new piece of paper is attached to it, which I can't read because it's behind the bar-bar fence. But it's almost readable on one side, on 240th. It's unreadable on the other side because it's eight feet above the ground, and I'm not that tall. So there's some more adjustment. And when you get done, please ask them to put it outside the fence where it belongs so that normal people of a normal height can read something instead of something that's my, two feet above my head on the Marine View Drive. And if they got a time, maybe they should move it from behind the flowering plum tree. Because as you're driving by, all you see is a big red plum tree right smack in front of it, and you got 1,000 lineal feet of fence. They decided to put it behind a flowering plum tree. So in a positive vein, we want to be sure and thank Mr. Somebody-or-other named LLC, who undoubtedly has great taste, has a lot of money, he has five houses. We know he has great taste. He has 37,000 bottles of wine in his wine cellar. So he must have great taste. We like that guy. We want a millionaire to come in there because he's the kind of guy who can build a great renovated building. He can figure it out, he can hire some really good architects, and he can plant a complete facade across the front of it. The new facade sticks out 30 feet and has big rooms in them, has big decks outside, has a deck with a concrete lid on it, just like they have in Waikiki, just like they have next door. The Judson Park got renovated. They put in decks. Everybody has glass railings, everybody has a beautiful building, everybody has a panoramic view of Puget Sound. And we think that the multimillionaire who bought it and wrote a check for $11 million must be planning on putting a new facade on the front of a giant concrete building. There's nothing wrong with a concrete building. I helped measure the windows 40 years ago. They have Alaska-grade aluminum windows. There's nothing wrong with the windows. Their building isn't leaking water, it's not falling apart. It hasn't fallen down in an earthquake in a hundred years. It's built by masons, the smartest guys in the world. So we're looking forward to a great thing that might come up, and maybe it'll challenge the Beryan Town Center. I just left the Beryan Town Center two hours ago. Oh, have I got 14 minutes left?
No, sir.
I got 14 minutes left.
Sir, if you could just wrap up your thoughts real quick.
Okay, here, here's the, here's the deal. Two hours ago, I was in Beryan, and I was walking through a really cool big area. It's called the Beryan Town Center. It took them a couple of years to fit it out and all that. But now it has beautiful grass, and it got like 100 tents out there, and all kinds of food, and all kinds of groceries, and all kinds of strawberries, and blueberries, and hamburgers, and hot dogs. And they are having a lot of fun. Whole bunch of people coming to a big festival area with white big tents. We look forward to your assistance in making this the landmark on the sound.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Pettingbone. All right, with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, mayor, good evening, everyone. So I want to focus a little bit on, there were a couple of items here that we've, that we've moved. One thing that's significant today is July 14th. And I know all the many Francophiles and history buffs in the audience will appreciate that today in France is known as Bastille Day. And this was the famous event where the Bastille, which is a prison, was overrun by the beginning of what became to be the Paris Mob that facilitated the revolution in France in 1789. And one of the first actions of that time was to storm the Bastille and release the prisoners. And apparently, according to different accounts, there were as many as six people in the Bastille, and they were all there as part of debtor's prison for not having paid taxes. So we're not sending a message here. But we, we are just acknowledging that internationally, this is an important day. The, the French Revolution followed the American Revolution, and was of great significance to the Europeans and to the world. Okay, moving on from there. We had an entrance conference with the state auditor yesterday. A number of our council members and staff attended that. And that is typically, we have what are known as exit conferences, where they tell us the result of their review of our finances. In this instance, we kind of expanding transparency and availing ourselves the opportunity to meet with the auditor in advance, kind of heard what their plan for their audit is going to be moving forward. And then when their audit is complete, we will have an exit conference once again, inviting members of council, the mayor, deputy mayor, to attend that with staff and kind of let them know what, they will let us know what they found. One of the things that is consistent with the auditor's review of this city's finances have been their willingness to write a letter to the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national group. And for the past number of at least four years, we have received an award of excellence for the manner in which our financial statements are prepared. I attribute that to the expertise of our finance department, to the, the work of both Beth Anne and Jeff, who deserve a great amount of credit for everything. And, and we're very proud of, of that performance, especially in the face of the challenges that we've been dealing with. And I'll just acknowledge a few of those challenges, and then I'm going to ask Beth Anne to do an update, our financial update for us. So in the past, over the past eight months, 10 months or so, we've been involved in implementing a new financial management system. And the challenge with doing something like that, bringing it into a more modern kind of version, technologically more accessible and available than the previous system, is that we also had to maintain things like paychecks going out, bills being paid, finances being accounted for. So Beth Anne and Jeff and your team have done a great job of transitioning for continuity of operations in our financial endeavors. And that's, that's been critical, and they've done a great job of that. At the same time, we cha, faced the challenges associated with COVID. And Beth Anne will walk through some of those, but some of those had to do with challenges to revenue, challenges to expenditures, challenges to use of staff, the availability of manpower, focused on manpower. What, what specific programs and services did we need to provide? And in the midst of that as well, the governor issued an emergency proclamation regarding COVID and the activities of local government and state government. So we've been bound by those requirements as well. I might add that in addition to what the state has imposed, but in addition, in addition to the actual local economic impacts of COVID, we've also been responding to what the federal government and their provision for some resources for us and other cities through the American Rescue Plan Act in terms of resources available to the city, and then accountability for those resources. I know Jeff's been very involved in making sure that we are consistent in our compliance with the requirements of federal government. And Beth Anne and Jeff, once again, have done an incredible job of balancing a new financial management system, challenges associated with COVID, resources associated with COVID, continuity of operations, and dealing with all the aspects of finance to keep the city going in a, in a positive and healthy manner. So with that, Beth Anne, I will ask you to give us a summary, and thank you for your efforts.
Thank you very much, Michael. Appreciate the introduction. As he said, that I couldn't, I couldn't have done it without Jeff and my excellent staff. What we have tonight is the quarterly financial report, fourth quarter 2021, and our major revenue trends. In the general fund, property taxes represent the largest source of revenue. And in 2021, we received 100.7% of the amount budgeted. It's probably our, our most stable revenue source. When we did the 2021 budget, we assessed property taxes in November of 2020, and we did not include that statutory 1%. I believe we banked the capacity. Utility taxes are the second largest source of general fund revenue, which is six, comprising 16.1% of total revenue. And they increased 2.7% over 2020. So we are seeing an uptick from that. 2019 was our regular year when COVID hit. Things went way down in 2020, so we're starting to see us coming out and businesses doing better, which is really reflected in the regular sales tax received in 2021, where we saw an increase of 5.3% over 2020. And those sales tax receipts were in line with the city's projections. In November, Jeff presented a revised budget, and we actually had increased our sales tax projections. And these came in a little bit higher than anticipated, which is good news. Increases in sales tax activity were seen in wholesale trade, retail trade, and services. Construction had a small increase of 0.9% compared to 2020. So, next slide. Oh, sorry. Just hit enter. Business and occupation taxes were 9.2% less than 2020. I think that the independent businesses, also we've had a change in how people filed BNO taxes. With our major implementation of the financial management system, the care and communication to local businesses probably wasn't as high because we were so focused on the financial management system. We are now working on getting that up and running and communicating. So I anticipate seeing an increase in the business and occupation taxes. Franchise fees received were in line with what we had budgeted. It's, they're just a tad less than what we collected in 2020. Red light running revenues were 1.3 million in 2021, which was 9.2% higher than the amount in 2020, which we saw a huge decrease in 2020 because most people were working remotely. But now, as everybody sees, people are coming back to the office, and so we have increased commute time and activity on the roads. Real estate excise tax was significantly higher of 2.2 million than our revised budget projections of 1.7. In 2021, total selling price for all property sales was 412,793,387,50. That reflects increases in real estate prices and increase in real estate sales account for that additional revenue. So we definitely saw more activity, and the prices were higher. We know that real estate excise tax is used for capital improvement projects, so that money is available when we plan the CIP. Okay, fiscal, as Michael said, in fiscal 2021, we had continued impacts from COVID. And even those, those impacts had eased. Various city service programs remain closed or very limited. When we did the budget for 2021, parks and recreation had planned to do the summer programs, but we had an uptick in our numbers. So they had limited success in opening up the programs. So we're now starting to see that in 2022, that we are able to get back to some of our pre-COVID levels. But we're kind of slowly getting there. For the general fund, total revenues were 23.5 million compared to our budgeted revenues of 22.5 million. That's attributed to increases from the use of American Rescue Plan funding that we received from the federal government. Municipal court was very successful in getting grant proceeds of about 150,000. Emergency management was successful in getting about 58,000. And the police department was successful in getting approximately 195,000 in grant money. So that helped attribute to that increase. Our total general fund expenditures were just below 23 million compared to our budgeted expenditures of 24 million. Primary reason for that was the change in practice of not recording the intra-fund transfers between departments within the general fund. That is where we have the indirect cost allocation, where we allocate to the departments so we can fully cost the program. I'm not actually doing those transfers. The information is available when we need to set rates or give you a, a picture of what the program costs. It's just we're not actually doing the transfers because it inflated the revenues and it inflated the expenditures. But we have that information to know what the costs are. And, and also in 2021, because there weren't a lot of programs open, it didn't make sense to allocate cost to something that wasn't operating. Our ending fund balance is healthy. It's seven point, little over 7 million, about 31.2%. It's higher than anticipated a great deal to the grant, grant funding received. And this provides resilient, resiliency while we continue to navigate through COVID and economic uncertainties. We know that our cost of living is going up, and with salaries and wages next year, we may need to use some of that to help cover that cost of living increase. Michael?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to mention the significance of that 31.2%. As we were coming out of bankruptcy, threat of bankruptcy, a number of years ago, the city council at that time approved standards established with Government Finance Officers Association that required the city, legally required the city, to maintain at least 16.67% in our fund balance. And that was, at the time, I think we started that, we were around 5%. With some very low number, we were able to cover city obligations for something like six weeks. Now with the 16.67%, it was a significant change. As you can see, and then, and when I talk about the quality of what Jeff and Beth Anne do, we are in, emerging from COVID with a fund balance of over 30%. So that, that is just simply a sign of the strength and solvency of the city. Thank you.
And we'll be programming that into the five-year financial model and having that during our retreat on September 8th, our budget retreat. So, and we continue to be fiscally conservative and make sure we monitor adopted budget, that we're meeting our obligations. So.
Anne, if I, I want to just add one thing, and you referenced it earlier, but it's significant in this context. At the same time, the city was entitled to take an increase in the property tax of 1%. And for three years in a row, we have not done that because we've had sufficient funds available without using that 1%. So our residents have benefited, our homeowners from, and property owners, from the manner in which these finances have been conducted. Thank you.
The Marina Fund is more a business-type activity. It's one of our enterprise funds. And so for 2021, they had income of one point, close to 1.6 million. They had a net increase in cash and cash equivalents of one point, little less than 1.4 million. They spent 381,000 on acquisition and construction of capital assets. They spent a little, close to 800,000 for principal and interest on debt. The thing about the Marina is in 2022, at the end of this year, they will pay off the bonds for 2012. That will be the last debt service payment. And I know that we have plans for dock replacement. So the, the Marina's in good shape. Marina rates were adequate to cover operating expenses, non-operating expenses, capital outlay, and debt service. So they're in a great position as we move forward into 2022. Surface water management fund income for that is, for 2021, was a little less than 2 million. They had an increase in cash and cash equivalents of about 228,000. They had a significant capital improvement plan, so they spent 1.639 million for acquisition and construction of capital assets. Their rates were adequate to cover operating, non-operating expenses, and capital outlay. So as Michael said earlier, the Washington State Auditor's Office conducted the entrance conference for our audit of the annual comprehensive financial statements for fiscal year January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. One of the things when they do that audit, we have a government, governmental-wide financial statements, and that includes all resources and liabilities, both current and long-term, for all the funds of the city. So we report on accrual basis for the Marina and the Swim Fund, but what the governmental accounting standard board has set in this accounting standards is that we need to convert the governmental funds into a full accrual to show both current and long-term. So we have a statement that has assets and deferred outflows of resources, and it exceeds its liabilities and deferred inflows. So it's like the cash, or the assets exceed our liabilities, both current and long-term. And then when we talk about deferred outflows of resources, an example is we have to book the city of Des Moines' proportional share of the state retirement assets related to our city's employees and other post-employment benefits for left-one retirees. And then on the other side, for the liabilities, which is deferred inflows, we have to book that proportional share of the liabilities related to the pension. And any unavailable revenues, that would be something that is, we've collected, but it applies to a future period. And also debt refunding liabilities, which you amortize over the length of the debt. So that's, it gets a little complicated because governmental accounting standards board just love to issue new standards. So, but that's what the auditors are looking at. Our financial statements are an important way for Des Moines to demonstrate accountability in our financial management practices and to provide useful information for city council developed policy choices. And as Michael said before, we're very proud since 2017 to consistently receive awards of excellence for preparation of the annual comprehensive financial statements in compliance with governmental accounting standards. So.
Beth Anne, thank you. There, one point to make in this is that there are a number of ways that this directly affects our city. But one of the ways has been, not only have we not had to collect the property tax, the available property tax, on real property. At the same time, because of your efforts and Jeff's efforts, and all of us kind of pulling together, and receiving a three-step bond upgrade from Standard and Poor's, the result was when interest rates were 3%, and we were getting 50 basis was when interest rates were 3% and we were getting 50 basis points off the 3%, that's all well and good. Interest rate's now 9%, and instead of that, that 50 basis points, maybe we're getting half as much. So we're say, we were able to save the city in terms of the cost of expending capital dollars hugely because of your financial management and the manner in which the city and the city council have approved us going about this. So those are some real ways that money stretched further by doing the right thing with the money. Thanks. Does that conclude your?
I was just going to say, I really appreciate Michael's support and council's support. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Beth Anne.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yep. Beth Anne?
He tried to run away.
I'm, 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 I understand that as your first reaction, so.
Yeah.
I'm asking this question in part so that people listening can understand, but I heard you say we have an ending fund balance target, or Michael brought it up, of about 16%. And we currently, as of this fourth quarter of 2021, ended up with an ending fund balance of 31%. How volatile is that percentage? And does this mean we, we have a chunk of money we didn't spend? Or can you explain that a little bit in better detail for people like me who aren't financial whizzes?
Probably the majority of that was receiving grant revenue, which really is more of a one-time activity that has boosted our fund balance because as we have navigated through COVID, we have tried to be very disciplined in our expenses, that if there's a revenue shift, that we're living within our means rather than going out and buying, you know, new things that you don't have income to pay for. So as these windfalls come, that's kind of in our bank to be spent. I know some of it might be timing because we did transfer some money at the end of the year for a couple of positions for the police department because I thought they were going to start in October or November, and I believe we didn't get the officers on until January, February. So there is, some of that is some timing differences, some of it is grant revenue. But we did underspend in 2021, so we do have some additional money in the bank. So, but we also still have uncertainties because we still have a, an agreement and a bargaining agreement for one of our units that we haven't settled yet. So we know that there's going to be some resources that need to go towards that. So it's kind of, I can't give you specifics, but a lot of it is, we probably have over a million dollars in grant revenue that help bump up that fund balance.
Councilmember, if I may as well, so the first part of your question was absolutely correct, is that it can be a function of timing. So the day before we receive the property tax revenues for May, the day after, our fund balance is going to be significantly different. And so what we're always trying to do in council, when we went through the post-bankruptcy, sounds great to say that, challenges, they were interested in trend. And so that 16.67% that GFOA recommends is a function of trend. We want to always be at that, in that range, so we don't get caught. Because at the point at which we had 5%, that was before there were any uncertainties relative to claims against those funds. We, we could have, that was how close we were. And so, so it's a great question because it does fluctuate over time. But over trend, what we're trying to do is establish what that looks like. And for example, when we do the budget process this year with the council, we will bring you a five-year projection of what that fund balance will look like over time to help council make decisions about expenditures that are, you know, appropriate based on what our resources are.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Buxton?
A little bit unrelated to some of the information there, but how long do we need to carry that fund balance and go through this challenging time before we might qualify for one more step, like when Standard and Poor's and Moody's?
That one, I'm not sure. I know that the next time we go out for debt, we're going to push to see if we can get the next highest rating. Before we do that, we will contact our financing group and go through the criteria that is needed for that. I know that last time we did it, they said if you get through a difficult time and maintain your fund balance, we have a good chance, good shot at it.
And, and that's, you know, it's an interesting question because our understanding was, Deputy Mayor, that we had to withstand a significant financial challenge. So we, they moved us to double A+, triple A is the highest. And so the, the idea was, okay, if you can, if you can withstand a macroeconomic challenge and survive it, great, okay? Then what happened is we had COVID, and then the next thing we heard, yeah, but COVID doesn't count. So, so we went through that, and I think there, there's some, there's some factors kind of in our favor as to the next time we issue bonds. And whether that's related to the Marina or to the dock replacement, whatever it is, that, you know, we will, in all likelihood, receive a pretty favorable bond rating for the issuance of those bonds. And that will start that process, I think, of raising us both de facto and then formally to, to a higher level. But believe, we think about that all the time. We're a little disappointed because we survived COVID, which is great, right? It was like, that's, that's kind of unfair. But anyways, thank you. Any other questions?
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, thank you, Beth Anne. So at the entrance thing today, when will you get notification of the area, the focus areas that they talked about?
A good question.
Thank you.
Jeff? They haven't said. We have a new team, so we're learning our communication between the new principal players and the, and the state auditors. So I'm hoping that they'll finish their planning in, I would say, probably no longer than three weeks. Because usually they let us know what areas in the accountability audit that they'll be doing. They're trying to meet a deadline for the financial statement audit so we can file for the award again. And we're, we were hoping to have that done by July 31st, but due to staffing resources for their office, they're having a hard time meeting that. So we may have to actually extend it a little bit. And once they finish the financial statement portion of it, then they'll move on to the compliance and the accountability. So that's why I'm thinking maybe the first or second week of August, they should be letting us know those areas.
Is it possible to inform council of just those broad topic areas?
I can ask them. I'm sure that they would be willing to do so.
Thank you. So this may be a.
Councilmember, just for clarity, I'm sorry for interrupting you. But regardless of council's knowledge of those subject areas or not, there's a very prescriptive formula that the state auditor follows in review of our finances. So it's not just kind of willy-nilly, what about this, what about that? No, they, they have a very specific protocol, just because I don't want to raise expectations about inputs here that are not appropriate.
No, I, I just, my understanding was that it's sort of like the Catholic Mass where they basically just sort of rotate, you know, they get through different areas, but it, they, you can't do everything every year, and so you just kind of do a few this year and then a few, and every four years or so, you know, you just kind of come back and, anyway. So is there, you mentioned the, the change in cost allocations, and that drove me nuts, and it's probably a fool's errand, but is there any way with the new accounting gizmos that you could sort of look at the 2017 numbers with the same, through the same lens? Or, it's probably a silly, but you kind of understand what I'm, what I'm getting at or it may be.
Excuse me, one again, once again, Beth Anne. I, I guess the question would be, you know, the, the system that we purchased has different capabilities. And then the question would be, what would be the purpose of doing that? Is that a comparative? Is that, you know, what's the, what's the thinking behind utilizing the system and resources to find that out?
If, if it's a one-button deal, it would just be.
Because it's in the budget, right?
What's that?
It's in the budget all those years.
Yeah, but you know, you look at, you, all of a sudden, you get to, you know, a certain year, and all of a sudden you see like, you know, parks and rec, and it's just dramatically higher, and you realize that it was just a change in accounting practice. It wasn't like, yippee, we, you know, allocated a ton more money to programs. I, I just wanted to be able to see apples to apples. If it's, if it's a big deal.
I'm sorry, probably the best resource is when the state auditor actually showed us that FIT tool.
Yes.
Financial intelligence, because we have to report to the state auditors on the bars accounting that's prescribed by the state. And so to me, that would probably be the best historical presentation. And then I guess if there's, if there's differences, then, you know, we could move from there. But their FIT tool on their website is actually a very good resource.
And one last thing, and again, this is another, since the general fund balance, you know, is shifting, is there like a particular day of the year that would be sort of most representative? Like if you had to pick one snapshot that might, you know, I mean, I understand you want to do trends, but just, you know, there might be a day of the year where basically this grant cycle is over and, you know, before, that, that said this is typical for the city?
I use 12/31 because it's the end of our calendar year, and that's what we have to report to.
Okay, thank you.
And, and also I think the answer to the question is, that's why the auditors come. They want to account for every dollar that we spend, which they do. Thanks, Beth Anne.
And I think that when we do the budget, the year-to-year comparison is one of your best gauges at that point. With that, I, I think you've done an excellent job. My kudos to you and your team, particularly in transitioning systems that are going to better service, so I just say thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our report.
All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Before I have the city clerk read the consent agenda, just shortly before the meeting, I spoke to the police chief, and he asked me to remove item four, which is the Leeds program, from the consent agenda. There was some additional information he wanted to get to the, from the county, so he expects this to be on the consent agenda for August 4th. With that being said, I'll have her read it, but exclude that item. Everybody agree with that? Is that okay? All right. City clerk, you may read, read the consent agenda.
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, childhood cancer awareness month proclamation. Item five, public health, Seattle and King County Federal Subaward, Award Agreement for Windmuck Creek Basin Survey. Item six, senior services advisory committee appointments. Item seven, draft ordinance 22-005, reduction of speed limit on Pac Highway South SR 99. And that concludes the consent calendar. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilmember Nutty?
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Buxton. Is there anyone that wishes to pull an item? Seeing none? Oh, Councilmember Steinmetz?
It's not so much a pull as a question about what. I don't know what the appropriate that area is. Do I just have to pull it?
No, you could, I'll let you, I'll ask a quick question.
Did we get any feedback on item number seven?
That would be the lowering of the speed limit. I do not believe we have. Yeah, I'm seeing Dan's head shaking. So with that, I'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda as is? Vote passes 6-0. With that, let me read the proclamation. Whereas each year in the United States, more than 30, 300,000 children and youth under the age of 19 are diagnosed with cancer worldwide. And whereas childhood cancer is the number one disease-related cause of death for children in the United States and many other countries. And whereas, although the five-year survival rate for childhood cancer has reached 80%, nearly 2,000 American children, children under the age of 19 will die each year from cancer, making it the leading killer of children by disease. And whereas, those that do survive will face at least one chronic health condition later on in life. And whereas, the, the causes of childhood cancer are largely unknown, and more studies are needed to understand which treatments work best for children. And whereas, cancer treatment for children often must differ from the traditional adult treatments to take into account children's development needs and other factors. And whereas, children, including Leila Bexton, is just one of many hundreds of children who have been successfully treated for cancer at Seattle's Children's Hospital, and her family now volunteers to raise awareness about childhood cancer. And whereas, Des Moines is a caring community that, that supports children and families. Now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims the month of September as childhood cancer awareness month. All right, we'll move on to new business. This is a time for sole purpose of proposing new business items that have not previously been before the council for discussion on a future agenda. This is not a time for questions about old business. Council members can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any council members have new business that they would like to propose? Councilmember Harris?
I do. I actually have three things.
Yeah, could you turn your mic, mic on? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. So I attended the DMMA meeting last night, and it prompted me to, last, at last year's ARPA meeting, we set aside some money for Marina redevelopment modeling software and a training, like a fly-through. And now would not be a bad idea to think about executing on it. I guess the, the permitting is getting close, and they expressed concerns about dry stack. Enough place, enough pieces of the puzzle are coming together.
So Council, Councilmember Harris, we'd approved it, and, and you're, you're trying to, what you're trying to do is find out the status of where that is. This isn't, this isn't new business. This would be business that you could send a request in.
I'm trying to find the status. I'm trying to say, let's, let's execute, let's bring this to the top of the stack now.
But, but the point is, is there's a, there's a greater plan to it. I think, I suggest we have the city manager respond to that on when the timeline is for that decision. I think it, it's adequate. I think they've been working on the plan, and it fits into that rather than forcing the issue that, that might not be in our timeline. But if you've got three people, if you've got two other people to support it, we'll discuss it.
I.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing two others, so let's go to your next one.
Okay, so, yeah, and speaking of which, the Des Moines Creek Phase Four Business Park, so in April, I mentioned that other cities, among them Pulteau, have a sales tax by zone report, and I would like the city to do the research necessary to execute that report for the public. This would allow the city to obtain information on the revenue we accrue by geographic zone. And my cost estimate is about eight hours of time to do it once a year. And so that would give us a picture of downtown Des Moines Creek Business Park, each area of, of the city. How much is it giving us in terms of utility taxes, sales tax, and so on? And I think that would be a valuable thing.
So understanding you want the geographical tax review, do we have two other council members to support this, that maybe council, that the city manager could, could find out some information regarding that? Okay, there's, there's enough for that review. We'll pass it on to the city manager. Okay?
Ruby? Okay, and last but not least, also, I mentioned to the DMMA people that, you know, fishing has gone down in recent decades, and the public may not be aware, but there are tens of thousands of tires in Puget Sound along all of our coastline. And they're not great environmentally. They appear to be the, at least a strong component in the drop-off in fishing. So we paid $343,000, if memory serves, in order, it's called a mitigation bank. We had to pay money for, to the Everett Slough in order to get permission to do the North Bulkhead. You have to pay a certain amount of this mitigation money. Just, just, hang on. And so the deal is, I would like the city, I would, I would like the city to research the possibility of creating a mitigation bank for the city of Des Moines, possibly in partnership with the Port of Seattle. That would give not only us, but also other agencies and government the ability to pay us for their mitigation and thus get the tires and other things done.
So really quick, because I, Deputy Mayor Buxton, I'll recognize you in a second. I'm very familiar with this issue, because I work very closely with Washington Scuba Alliance, the Mass Center. And as a scuba diver, I've seen them, and I know exactly what you're talking about. The thing is, is that there's still efforts and attempts by the Washington Scuba Alliance to take the money that was allocated for a reef for that purpose at this juncture. I don't think it's necessary for this city, and I think there's more information that can be found out. But I don't think we need to go down that path yet.
I believe that a portion of this was, was a discussion when we ended up paying for the permit for, I think it was a North Bulkhead anyway, we forwarded money to Blue Heron Slough. And then there was a conversation about working toward qualifying something along our shoreline already. I mean, honestly, J.C., I think that there has been some conversation and work about that already.
Let's turn it over to Dan Brewer for some more information.
I know the request is specific to mitigation bank for tire removal.
No, sir. It could, a mitigation bank can be used for any environmental project now and in the future. I was just providing that as an example, sir.
We, that is something that we've been working on in the engineering team to develop exactly this kind of concept at the mouth of Des Moines Creek and the mouth of Massey Creek. So it is something that's in our planning, and hopefully we can bring something like that forward as part of our capital planning in 20, for 2023.
Dan, if I may, would that be in time for the, you know, to be part of the planning for the three docks?
Not a chance. This is something that would take many years to develop a mitigation bank for something like this. So it'd be something that we'd start and, and work with local agencies, including the port and others, to develop a mitigation site locally. So it'll take a while to get there.
That's why I want to start now, because these things do take, you know, my understanding.
But it already sounds like it's in the plan, so I think, I think your request is merited, but it's already probably in the plan, so I don't see a need for the council to take it further than already what they're doing. We're just looking for two other people to agree with you that we should create some sense of urgency that I think it's going to work in the proper chain, and I'm not seeing that support. So with that, does anyone else have any new business? Okay. All right. We're going to move on to board and committee reports, and we're going to start with Councilmember Steinmetz tonight.
Well, I really don't have much to report tonight, unfortunately, so there, I, were no committee meetings or boards that I attended. And I was gone all weekend, so I didn't even get to go to the market and enjoy that. So I'll be quick.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Steinmetz. Moving on to Councilmember Oxger.
No report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Oxger. Moving on to Councilmember Nutty.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that there are a bunch of new businesses in town, restaurants and others alike. And I hear constantly that we don't get any new businesses, and people are leaving. Well, here's your opportunity. Please patronize these businesses throughout the city, downtown, and highway alike. I want to remind everybody that the Des Moines Farmers Market is every Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. It is a great place. We were down there, actually got the opportunity to visit it twice this last Saturday. So it was, it was incredible. A lot of people, excuse me. And then the summer concert series at Des Moines Beachfront on Wednesdays. And I think that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nutty. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Just for anybody who watches the two public commenters tonight, you know, that's exactly how you do it if you want to affect change. Brilliant. And I wish that there were a dozen more like Ms. McMichael and Mr. Pettibone. Yeah, you can get 300 likes on Facebook, and it is nothing compared to their performance. Well done. So, you know, if you're, if you're part of the city council, you're going to get these flaming things, and they, people don't understand that, they think the clerk is going to read their entire email. And then you get an angry thing like, well, if you really cared, you'd read my email. So, okay, I'm going to read your email. The noise and racing that takes place in and around Redondo Beach Drive, south consistently in the evening hours, and city ordinance 1595, noise restrictions, and so on and so forth. And then she goes on to, her action item is, because I'm going through it, is that the three signs, the no racing signs that I proposed last year, they're in the most obscure places possible, and they're teeny-tiny. And I specifically said, I want something prominent and with a dollar amount as a natural experiment to see if it would, you know, provide some deterrent effect. And where they are, you can't even run that experiment, because nobody sees them. And I have expressed this to the members of the Public Safety Committee, and I sure hope they take action to move them. And finally, so the, yes, the port bought the, you know, is going to give the area, I call it Des Moines Creek Business Park Phase Four, to Panatoni, who did phases one through three. And it's a choice. The other side of the parcel is at 200th, and the city of Sea-Tac chose to buy their allotment and turn it into park. And it's a difference in values. In 1975, the port, in the only time, the residents got together and they created a mitigation plan for the second runway called the Sea-Tac Communities Plan. And it was designed to provide, basically be the comprehensive plan for the entire surrounding areas of the airport. And we have completely lost our way. The intention was North Sea-Tac Park. They did the Northern Quadrant, very nice, and then somehow things stopped. And I would just say to people who are so concerned about it, that's how things should have been. That is what it could be. Do not believe that this is as good as it gets. But if you can forget that easily, even just 30 years or so, then, you know, if people are able to convince you that, hey, this is great, that's why democracy dies. That sounds hyperbolic, but really, that's the deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Moving on to Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Senior Services Advisory Committee meeting this week, and it's great to be with these people from the community wanting to put their time into improving it. We appointed two new members, Pedro and Eileen, so welcome. So glad to have you if you're watching. Just want to remind you, congregate dining has moved inside for lunches Monday through Thursday at noon, so you don't have to be a senior to gather for those lunches, but it is free if you're over 55. And our vets and senior services levy in King County, we received a grant that helps to increase diversity and relationship with our partner center in South Seattle. And so we've got some activities coming up that partner the two, the two centers, and I'm excited about that. They're building the programs in, in the senior center, and they're working to get a shuttle driver to help accessibility for people. If you wanted more information, go to the Des Moines Activities Center Facebook page. There's a lot of information there. I also attended a Public Issues Committee, which is a gathering of electives from all over the county, from all the cities. And one of the things that we gave our input on was a clean water plan for the King County wastewater treatment. And I just want to say, they're, they have some guiding principles that they're putting together, and I noticed that there just wasn't any requirement for the science. And so I specifically requested, they added that the decisions and plans that they made in this plan was based on the best available science. There wasn't anything in their guiding principles about science, and they accepted my recommendation. So I'm pretty proud that that's going to be in that for the review of our wastewater treatment into the sound. Just as a little reminder, that 988, which is the new suicide hotline, is launching this Saturday all over the U.S. And in the state of Washington, we're working on, well, actually, all over the country, they're working on also specific redirection for certain populations to have targeted support for veterans, LGBTQ, Native Americans, and more. As the program grows, they're going to be working on having specific targeted support for people that may have targeted issues. And then our legislature is working on increasing funds to cities to help support that. I attended a deputy mayor's meeting today of several deputy mayors in the county. And just as an update, many councils are reducing their meetings in August to give everybody a little bit of break. And interestingly, everybody all over the county is experiencing tension in the, the demand for jobs and housing versus, or in the same time as protecting the environment. It's a huge challenge for every city to comply with the demands of our state and on both of those sides. So we're, we're working, we're in the press as well here in Des Moines. I want to invite you to Park Run at 9:00 a.m. every Saturday. You'll meet some, somebody from all of, there's somebody from somewhere else in the world every single week. It's so fabulous. Great cultural experience. Okay. I don't know how long I have left, but I did want to respond. How much do I have? I'm good? I have one more thing.
I'll give you a minute.
Okay. The mayor and I attended the Port Commission on Tuesday and to comment on moving forward at the, this development that my colleague was speaking about, and we spoke in favor of it. I'm just going to list you the benefits. It bolsters our, by moving forward with this development, it bolsters our economy and jobs, bolstering the construction and reeling the business of the park. It's the completion of our 216th corridor, entry corridor to our city. It's the creation of a safer, sanitary neighborhood for the residents. If you walk that area, I would not walk it alone, but it would be an eye-opener. Forwards, our Green Cities Plan with our partnership with Forterra, they've done an inventory and a plan for us. We have a whole book. And the developer is going to be replanting four to one, which exceeds the plan given to us by Forterra, and removal of invasives. There's going to be a creation of a beautiful trail replanted with sustainable species, paid for and maintained by another entity other than the taxpayers of this city, creating a connection to our regional Lake to Sound Trail system. And last of all, it complies with our mandatory GM, Growth Management Act, jobs and growth targets. So I posted a long essay in regard to this in detail. I would be happy to forward this essay that gives a lot more details to anybody who would like to. Just email me or call. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Buxton. First, first order of business, I attended the Washington State Little League softball tournament at Steven J. Underwood Park. Thank you, Chief. Your officer showed up, Sergeant Helgren's team, and there was a nice moment of silence for Ms. Officer Underwood. They also wanted to pass off their thanks to you, Michael, and the Parks and Recreation team for the great service they provided. As Deputy Mayor Buxton was speaking about, I attended the Port Commission meeting to be in favor of the Des Moines West Business Park. And I agree, a couple of things that a lot of people don't realize is, yes, we're talking 600 jobs and $16 million in wages. It's additional revenue to the city. It's also been a nuisance property. It's not, it's not exactly what it's been led to believe of a bunch of old-growth trees. Primarily, the property is blackberry bushes and brush and so forth. And it's an access to the Des Moines Creek Trail that many feel unsafe. And I know that our police and the port police have had to respond there on multiple occasions. It also is covered with, like I said, blackberries and ivy and stuff are invasive species. This is a great opportunity to achieve several things. And that's add jobs, add revenue, provide a safe space, and it will be very aesthetically pleasing to the community. One of the things that's always problematic as council members, we have to look at things holistically, not through one lens, where none of us like to see certain trees or things go down, but in some cases, is it better in the end? And in this case, I believe it is. With that being said, I just want to remind people that we won't have a meeting, obviously, next week, but we have one of the honored traditions in our community. It's the 63rd Annual Waterland Weekend. There'll be a barbecue and a concert in the beach park on Friday. I believe the barbecue's at 4:30, and the concert starts at 7:00. The parade will be on July 23rd, Saturday. That'll start at 5:30 with the kids' portion of it, and the grand parade will be at 6:00 p.m. And I welcome the community to go there. It's great to see everybody in the community to get out. And of course, there's the Wheels and Keels events. The wooden boats will be in the marina on Saturday and Sunday, and the cars show up on Sunday. So I encourage you to get out and enjoy the community and enjoy what our community offers as, as a great way to see the rest of your neighbors. We've been shut up too long. With that, before I call for a motion to adjourn, the next meeting would be Thursday, August 4th at 6:00 p.m. And do I have a motion to adjourn? I see Councilmember Nutty.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Steinmetz, I saw the nod before the hand came up.
I was nodding to her.
Oh, there you go. We'll give you a tie then. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your right hand. Motion passes six-zero. Have a nice weekend. Be safe, and we'll see you August 4th.